I'll call the meeting to order at six oh six and the first item on the agenda is a debriefing of the December twentieth meeting, special meeting that we had with the state representatives. And I know that we're going to meet again and that we've talked about of impact aid and you know being an alliance district. And the PCS, which is the educational cost share. But I have to tell you from my own experience at that meeting, I learned things that I I had no concept of. And I think Susan that you may have, so maybe you can speak to that to that and then we'll open it up to to the and I of board to work to debrief as it were, but maybe you can.
Well, I I think it'd be really good to have them come to see us. There's something out there from CAPS, the Connecticut Association of School Superintendents, called the Blueprint, which is also a bill that they're trying to get through that will try to, I guess, make things more equitable and reasonable going forward. Um, and certainly our legislators are kind of in the know right now. So I think I, no, I think I hope not. Um, so I believe that having them come to a board meeting, um, it's really very appropriate timing with since we're working on a budget. And these are all items that would affect our budget. So I think that's going to be our next step. So I know that Kim did reach out to them today. I saw that. And I just heard from Matthew that the legislators have actually met with the town with the city. So there I guess there's a videotape we can all watch. So I'll try to find that.
So I I don't know if any other board members want to contribute from their impressions of that meeting. I know Beverly or Reed or Jay, I don't know who else is out there. Oh, Dr. Bergen was there. Does anybody want to speak to that meeting? You can't see. Was that really? I heard a voice.
But more to more to be discussed and and to learn about coming, more to come.
In that case, if we have no more discussion, as it were, then I'm ready. The next item on the of the agenda is the budget work session. So in that case, I think it's all yours, baby.
Okay, so this is one of my favorite nights because we get to orient to the book. You all received your book as um, kind of a holiday gift. Ahead of time and I just so appreciate Ken and Lori and my central office team that's and Phil that have put this whole thing kind of together. Um, since October, we've really September, October, we start our work. And we knew that with a lot of the inflationary costs and having, you know, the buses go out to bid and some contracts um, that we knew that we were going to be going for a really um, it's going to be a very productive budget session trying to figure out and resolve. Um, you know, this budget. So um, but I look forward to doing it and I know I'll get great help with the board and we will do our due diligence like we always do. But um, I think Ken wants to kind of show you and remind you how the budget book is made up. We actually also have um, some templates that we can show the rest of the people who are online who may not have a budget book. So we want to make sure that um, you know, everybody can see this lovely book. And on the left-hand side, there's some really interesting information about the budget development that Ken's going to go through and he can lift those up. We can speak to those.
Yep.
Um, and then the contents, the table of contents and what yellow, red, green and pink, green and white.
Yeah.
So we'll march our way through and then we're going to um, talk about prior years and salary. Um, and we've already had a few retirements come in early so far, about seven. Um, and then of course, health insurance and then elementary. That's that's one of our shortest walkthroughs of of the of the journey. So.
So um, so I guess I would just want to orient everybody to the book that you received. Um, it's the it's the white binder. Um, it's set up just like the the book that we uh, sent to the the town council, the RTM uh, at the after it's been um, approved. And I just wanted to go through it, make sure everybody understands the sections and and what we're talking about. And then we'll talk about what's in the uh, in the left-hand pocket. Uh, so in the book, there's a yellow tab. That's uh, that's where you have overview of the uh, of the budget. Um, it gives some overview of revenue and some grant information. Uh, so it's kind of like a high level of view of the budget. Uh, and and we'll we'll go into more uh, specifics as we go along, but I think I just wanted to get you to understand what we're looking at here. Um, the the red tab, this is a little more detail. It's the same budget, but it's broken down by object code, which is how we spend the funds. Uh, you know, for instance, object code for salaries, there's an object code for employee benefits and so on. Uh, and so that's what this section represents. Uh, the white section, this is uh, enrollment. This is an estimated enrollment. It has some history going back to FY twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen. Uh, and it goes through actual of this year and then we have a projection for next year. Uh, the green section, this is uh, our our FTE report. And just so everybody understands what an FTE is. FTE is a full-time equivalent. Um, and you can think of that as a one full-time employee being equal to one FTE. If you have a part-time person that works half a day, that would be a point five FTE. And if you had two of them, then together they would make one FTE. So just so we have an understanding of what FTE means. So that's the green section. And then the pink section, this is the detail by by function, by program.
This is the deep dive.
Yeah.
We really spend time.
That's right.
Scrutinizing this and going through this really carefully.
And this is where it starts. You'd be a buildup from the bottom here and it feeds all the way up into these other schedules. Uh, so this is what we'll be going through uh, page by page uh, in the coming weeks. Um, then if you turn back to the front and you look in that front uh, left-hand pocket, there's additional uh, documents here. Uh, there should be a
Let them up. Do you want me to?
Yes, yeah.
Um, if I share.
Yeah, I am too.
Um. Mark, am I able to share? Or?
Yes, you you can.
Are you saying I'm reading off to?
Oh, I'm not.
I'm not.
I I think I can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's that is very generic.
Okay.
Account.
I'm not reading. Yes. I don't think I have the budget calendar, but I but it's the if the the first one is the budget calendar. We've seen this. We've gone over this before. Uh, the next one, I'll put this one up. This is the budget development uh, schedule. Hopefully, everybody can see that.
Yeah.
Oh.
Are you on?
I am. You are screen sharing. Am I doing something wrong, Clint?
Uh, we see it online.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
Proceed. Let me play with this.
Yeah, they can see what's on.
Okay, um, so this is uh, this is how we're going to walk through this budget. Um, so by day, uh, it also includes the pages that we'll be looking at. Uh, and then if additional staff is required for being here.
Okay, so that, okay.
Um. That is followed by the um, the adjusted budget from last year. So just a little bit of um, history as far as uh, how last up there goes. All right, um, just just a little bit of history as far as uh, how went last year went, we started off um, last January at a three point uh, oh four percent increase um, in our budget and then through work uh, we did throughout the months of January and and February. Uh, it came down to a two point two two percent increase, which was eventually approved by the by the town council and RPM. So that that's that page, just a little bit of history.
And we will get to that point as we go through this methodically together. We'll be able to find some things that, you know, we'll be able to hopefully reduce the budget by. Um, one of the things that we're doing right now, working closely with Clint on a scheduler um, who will help the middle school and high school be very efficient with their scheduling. We've done a history walk of the schedule and what kids have attempted to take and what they've actually been taking. And kind of which classes have filled up and which have not. So that's going to be really good information and we'll be ma- meeting with the administrative team of both middle school and high school this week. So that I am really looking forward to. We'll also have for the board to see our actual by classroom, by department. Um, the exact numbers for the different courses. So you'll see all the teachers teaching algebra and how many average, you know, are in there. You'll be able to see all of that. That's coming very shortly as we get ready to look at the deep dive of the middle school and high school.
Um, and so also included in in the in the book originally is is what we call a payroll reconciliation. This basically looks at last year's budgeted payroll um, uh, which you'll see in the in the lower um, left-hand corner, fifty one million four forty six by forty one. And all the changes that happened to bring us to the FY twenty four uh, budgeted number at this point, which is fifty two million eight twenty one, six ninety seven. Uh, so we we will go through this in more detail as we go forward. And
And this is just our salary account.
This is just.
This is just with the salaries.
Um, I I have a quick question about this. What on this page, could you also show exactly how much the administrator, like that line is that we're paying the administrators? You have the increase, but I'd also see like for administrative teachers all the way down the line, what what really are? Because it's a little deceiving the way it's.
You have you have that. We'll we'll be showing that.
I know I have that, but I would like to see it on this page. Because it it it's a very good comparison to show, okay, this is how much we're, you know, our teacher you know, is is passing us and then right next to it and next year it's going to be a million dollars more.
Is that this that you're speaking?
No, it's
If I could, I wanted to.
This is the one I think that's saying one, this one that's on the screen that um.
Yes, the one on the screen.
Okay.
It's just showing additions, but it's not showing actual. And they should be next to each other.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could take a moment, uh, if you would do what Rita did, if you have a comment or a question, just speak up because I can't see the um.
Right.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to stop sharing that one. I think I have this last one.
That's the most important one. Isn't that the driver of budget, the story?
Sideways. Um. I'm sorry. Don't know how to make this not sideways. Okay.
Say they're rotating.
Okay, there's. Okay. And then finally, what was also included um, is is this, this, this is the object code summary. It's it's the same exact numbers that are on the red tab. Uh, but it uh, it goes the other way, a long way. So it's a little bit bigger. Uh, and then we've added some comments on the right-hand side to help uh, give some, oh, is it not showing up again?
No.
You make it bigger? Oh, no, that's not the right one. This one, are you?
No, no, I'm I'm sorry. I want to this one.
Okay. So we haven't done the.
No, not yet. I want to go through the what what's in the book and then we'll. Okay, and so this is this is that same uh, uh, schedule as the as the red section, uh, but like I said, it has comments to help uh, help us understand what's driving the uh, the change uh, in that in that line.
And Rita, this does, this is the one I was thinking you were referring to. I understand now better what you were asking for, but this does show you um, the actuals from twenty two to the budgeted twenty three to what's budgeted twenty four. So it gives you a little bit of a history walk of the actual numbers.
I see the numbers lining up the same way, but that's, you know, we when when we go through it.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Questions.
And then, of course, I think that the board has always appreciated those comments. And certainly we can give more details as we walk through this. Um, but you see a lot has to do with contractual increases for our salaries. Um, some of them we don't know yet. We might not have negotiated yet and it's, you know, we're looking at competitive wages. Um, and we'll we'll go into that a little more. Um, Lori has some, Lori and Ken have some good information through a survey that Learn did um, showing us what different um, southeastern Connecticut school districts are paying for their subs and their pairs.
So that that's that's what's actually in the book. Uh, there is one more page uh, that what did not make it into the book. I apologize. I omitted it uh, in error. We did include it on the board notes, a hyperlink to it, uh, but that's this page here.
And I'll make sure that everyone gets this.
And and what this page is, I'm going to put it up so that those at home can see it. Where? That one, sorry. All right, this is the, right? All right, and and what this does, this is uh, this is what we're calling our story. This is uh, this is taking last year's final budget, which was seventy nine million, one fifty seven, two seventy one, and uh, what what changed? What is the difference between that budget and what we're uh, we're we're proposing in this book? Um, so you'll you'll see it starts off uh, with the the salaries. Uh, so overall, for all the changes in salaries, it's an increase of uh, uh, one million, three seventy five benefits, transportation and and so on. Uh, so this this is this is the story to how we got to our uh, preliminary budget of eighty three million, oh ninety eight, two hundred.
And there really are only two additional um, positions in here. They were um, positions that were paid by our IDEA, which was a grant. And very valuable. One is um, an additional behavioral analysis analysis um, staff member who really does oversee some of the programs like the ABA and the academy to help with some children who have some you know, challenging behavioral needs and um, this person has been highly trained at Learn and has been really um, so beneficial. He's almost a teacher of teachers in this field. You know, he really is a leader in this field. And um, then there's an additional security guard also as well. But other than that, there are no additional positions and I think on that sheet, you might have even seen a a savings of at least one FTE so far.
Well, actually, there's there's
Or balance.
It's 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 actually a net because there was a one added, but one taken away. So net, there was no change, but um, uh, the these are the only additionals that we have.
Right. And then, of course, benefits are up and, you know, we'll get into that and what's driving that. Um, and transportation, you know, um, the bid has come in and um, there were only two that came through. So this is according to the one that was probably the most efficient, but it is really higher. You know, our our bus drivers are unionized. So they had already negotiated a contract with them last year. So part of what you're seeing in this increase from the unionizing is there increased wages.
Sure, yep.
Um.
And then uh, the out-of-district tuitions, uh, we're seeing a reduction in the state-placed um, uh, uh, special education students. But uh, it's being it's being made up for by increasing rates and um, and for the in-district placements. So it's kind of a balance, but overall, we're we're seeing a small decrease. Uh, and then there is a is an increase in general education just due to increased rates.
Then we were going to tell a little bit about those professional services.
Yeah, uh, so professional services, these are um, uh, OTPT, there is instructional improvement, uh, preventative maintenance uh, that are driving up uh, driving up this cost.
And of course, as we know at home, we're seeing, we're hearing the electric bill's going to double anytime now. Um, you've got diesel fuel and, you know, electric and heating um, fuel costs that have definitely escalated in this timeframe.
Yeah, we have.
Right.
Uh, we had the benefit in the prior years of having leftover supplies due to the um, the COVID nineteen pandemic. We we didn't run the buses as much uh, in that first year and those supplies kind of went into the next year and then they went into this this year. Uh, this year, we're using up those supplies. We have to use those supplies this year. Um, so we have the benefit of that this year, but come next year, not only is it an increased price, but then we don't have any, we're not anticipating having any leftover supplies to to offset anything. So it's it's a very big increase under diesel.
I would have to say that um, the site budgets are really nominal because we really usually they we look at two percent for each of the site budgets, which are the school budgets. But this year we tried, we told them to see what they could do at a one percent. So we did streamline some of that already.
So the the total increase um, after all those um, ins and outs uh, is just under four million dollars, three three million, nine hundred and forty thousand. Um, and that that's what's driving our our budget at this point.
Are you up for questions or you want them to be?
Oh, yeah, at this point, uh, we are, yeah, definitely.
Uh, on the fourth line on this last sheet, the teacher retirees, estimated seven retirements, savings of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I guess I don't understand how seven can retire and that's all we say.
Well, uh, they retire, but they have to be replaced. And so the assumption is they'll be replaced at a lower rate. That's what that's what drives that uh, that hundred and fifteen.
And there is a payout that comes along with that when they first retire, according to their contract. Um. So.
Thank you.
Um, I I believe that has sunsetted, correct? In the new teachers retirement, that payout, is that could it does that continue or is that 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 has been sunsetted for new hires?
Sunsetted for new hires, Rita, but continues for those that are.
Okay, I just think it's good to let people know that.
Yeah, thank you for remembering that. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Did you want it? Should we go through this?
Yeah.
We're looking at the agenda.
Oh, yeah. So the agenda, let's see, said um, overview, orientation of budget materials, which I feel we've done.
Um, unless we have anybody who has questions about the orientation of the book and what's in it or what's on that left-hand side and what we've just added to. Um, Kim, I think you were walking in when we had brought up this page, which is the story of the budget, the drivers of the budget.
Yep, I got that.
You do? Are you sure?
It it's you sent, something came out a couple of days ago. Is it the same thing?
Just slightly adjusted, but I did put it in board notes.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have a chance to get it in with the book.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we we looked at the prior year um, and and what what happened last year. So I feel like we've covered that. Um, salaries and retirements, I guess we're on that. So in addition to this page that we're looking at, um, what's this, this page right here gives gives you a little bit more detail. It's essentially the same numbers, but um, um, you know, this this shows the contractual increases uh, for all of our groups, which comes in at uh, one million, four hundred and ninety three thousand. There are the positions added. You'll see that there is one special education teacher, but there's a position reduced on the next side. Uh, so they kind of net themselves out. Uh, there's the behavior analyst um, and the security guard uh, one point oh FTE. And on the reduction side, there's the retirements number that we looked at. Uh, we did, we were able to replace some positions um, at a net lower salary. Uh, so there is a little bit of savings there from uh, from what we have budgeted. So there's ninety six thousand. Uh, and then there was a reduction at the high school and point four FTE of a language arts teacher. That means this teacher is only working uh, three days a week instead of five days a week or something to that effect, the equivalent thereon.
But uh, the four FTEs that we saved in last year's budget um, continue.
Continue, yeah.
So those are cost savings.
Yeah, they're cost cost savings that.
Cost savings that continue.
Yeah.
Right.
I have a quick question. Is that okay?
Yeah, is there a way that we can minimize what's on there so that we can have contact on the screen?
I don't know.
We can, we can.
I can take this down.
Take that down. Okay.
You want, you want that plus Hollywood square.
And we'd like to be able to see there. Thank you. Beverly.
Okay, um, quick question. Uh, one, my first question has to do with the bus contract. Um, that's a million dollar increase about, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, is that a normal increase from contract to contract?
No, no, not normal at all. But I would say what we're finding as we scout around and and talk with Casvo and some of the companies is for today's day and age, for this year, it's what seems to be happening. Last year was a different story even, but for this year, we have noticed that there haven't been a whole lot of kind, you know, towns that we've been able to get, but we are going to be doing our homework. Um.
What is a normal increase from contract to contract for a bus contract?
Five percent, I would say is more more normal.
Um, yeah, I mean.
It depends on what your contract is for. Remember, we were with STA for a long time. And the past two years, I think, were three percent. So I think that they're trying to catch up for some of the the better deals that we've had with them.
I I I think we've been below market for a number of years. Uh, and so now when we go out to bid, we're we're at market. Uh, and so that's, I think that's what we're seeing here.
What's the percentage of the increase?
It's a twenty one percent increase.
Oh, my God.
It's huge.
It's huge.
And we can show you in the budget here, we actually have that listed. So you'll be able to see all of those details in one of the sections.
I I do not think this should be a multi-year contract at all, if it's going to be that. I mean, maybe we'll do that for a year and then go back out again, but that's really ridiculous.
Yeah.
It's not, and it's not twenty one percent every year for five years. It's twenty one percent now and then it goes up um, or it goes down.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have to do it.
To five percent.
Right, right.
Increases.
I'm going to recognize, I'm sorry, do you have more questions?
I have one more question about the behavior analyst. Is that going to be a permanent position at ninety four thousand dollars?
Yes, because that's part of the reason we've been able to keep our students here in Groton Public Schools with us instead of sending them out. And those costs can be fifty thousand per student or a hundred thousand per student. But having someone with this level of um, certification and knowledge for children who really need that special care with um, you know, trauma and and behavior and specialized education programs. It's it's been really, we've noticed a huge difference, Beverly, um, in you know, really being able to provide the just right environments. Um, he actually does training of teachers and training of pairs as well. So um, you know, it's been a real benefit. We were able to bring him on board through the IDEA grant. You know, through the art art professor IDEA. So it's valuable enough for us to want to keep him or keep this position, not him.
What kind of certification does this position require?
That's a PCBA certification, specialized certification.
Right, yeah. Many years of education in this and experience as well.
And and you think that we need another security guard and why is that?
Well, we we have needed um, the security guards. They are not all full-time. Most of them are part-time and I don't know if this is two-part counters that just.
It's two point, point five FTEs equalling one.
One. So we have some of our security guards. One. So we have some of our security guards coming in in the morning. And staying through lunch and some coming at lunch and staying through the afternoon. Um, and helping out in after-school as well. Um, especially with so many of the instructional programs that we have. Uh, you know, as on policy, how we really wanted to make sure that our athletes and others. Were getting the right kind of tutoring after school, so they can you be, you know. Part of our school community and all assets, so aspects. So it it is needed.
So Beverly, I see that you went back on mute um on mute. Okay, great. So I'm gonna recognize um William and then Matt.
So. First of all, I mean, just looking at that our salary budget only went up two point six percent. On the finance committee of two other organizations, that's really commendable. That's actually amazing, but. I think would help a lot of like board members as well as town people. To understand what the cost of living percentile changes for all of these things are, which are enormous. To say that our budget is going to increase only by four point ninety percent, whereas most budgets. For nonprofit organizations in the state of Connecticut are going to go up by twelve point nine percent. This is like people would be so jealous of this. So having a good. Cost comparison, like well, the transportation is going up seven point five percent. That's probably five percent lower than most. You know, other organizations uh looking at it. Like I said, the salary increase only two point six percent. Think about it, social security is going up eight point five. Okay, the cost, this is the worst increase in cost of living since nineteen seventy-two. And so I'd be very proud to say that we're only increasing our budget like, you know, less than five percent at this point. And um. So it'd be nice to have other data outside of our organization to show, all right, this is what, you know, like. Just any of the oil, heating, gasoline, transportation, all that stuff is. My health insurance, your health insurance estimate is only four point six percent increase this year, but nationally, it's about seven percent increase. So these are, I mean.
That would be good to get some of that.
These are pretty comforting. I mean, again, we're still gonna be responsible for having as minimal of an increase as possible. Um, because it's still, those that we're gonna send it to are just gonna take it from a monetary, you know, view. They're gonna look at it and go, wow, you're going up by almost four million dollars this year. Now, um, so they're gonna take that view of it versus saying we're going up only this percent. You know, and compared to other places, this is how, you know, well, we're doing to control the budget. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Ken or for Jay, but in looking at the increase on the transportation. At twenty-one percent, a good thing I was sitting down when I heard that. And also seeing the uh cost that we're having on our fuel oil and and maybe natural gas if we use it. I'm hoping that in any contracts we have, we're gonna have some kind of uh price adjustment clause. Because if we do have a recession this year, that is likely to result in falling oil prices, fuel falling, energy costs. And if we have to pay on the way up, I hope we can build in some contractual arrangements and have it go down on the way down. Again, you probably already dealing with this, but.
Yeah, so we we do typically purchase our oil and or our our diesel and our oil at the beginning of the year. We we enter a contract based upon uh anticipated costs uh through the end of the year. We can certainly look at that um. If if it went down, we we should definitely be able, hopefully be able to take advantage of that, but.
I hope there's some spot, spot market opportunities for us.
I just keep praying for rain and not snow and sixty-degree weather. So he doesn't go on.
So I I, one of the things, and Susan, I don't know if you talked about this before I got here, is that one of the things that you and I talked about this morning. Was um for the board um to uh be with um Ken and Sam. And um just kind of take to talk about what's happening in the transportation um milieu so that we can get a better handle. Um, of that um and and understand sort of what we're looking at and sort of um. And and do that more, I think, in an executive session, because we would be looking at con- at contracts, so. Um, I be be prepared, and I think I mentioned that in an email to you guys this morning.
Yes.
Um, is that um be prepared for that meeting to happen so that we can. Um, have all the information that we need to have as we um look at um the superintendent's budget. That will soon become ours at the end of February, so.
There there's no finalization on this.
Absolutely.
Processed.
I I just, once again, I think that it's such a large piece and that we're having quite a lot of reaction. But I think that it's really important that um we understand it so that as we um begin to one, once again, own the budget. In February, we can speak to that um and 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 give guidance. So I think that's, that's um. And I, that's why I sent the email this morning, just to kind of give you guys fair warning from that. All right. Salaries.
So that that's that's what we went over right here was uh the basically the entire salary um. Object code, if you will, um. I don't know if there's any more to discuss at this point in regards to salaries.
Unless we wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive that has the comments on it.
Yeah.
Um, Rita had mentioned that that page that you just saw, it would be nice to have a little historical approach to that. Um, so for now, though, we do have this that has that, that we can look at. And we can work on that chart to maybe showcase that a little better.
And and can I also ask, um, just upfront, is that we're gonna have lots of addendums and changes and whatever, and you're gonna be giving us a lot of information? Can you at some point or somewhere on your documents date it so that we can. Um, have the most, we can be working from the most current.
So I think you see this one is dated the nineteenth, so we're gonna, yeah, I think we should do that on the others you're saying too as well.
I got twelve twenty. I know, I'm just saying that I'm, I like I'm, you said that there's a difference than what one came from our um notes to this one. So anything that we get for paperwork that's different, if we could just have a date so that we don't get so confused.
Yeah.
Cause it's easy for. So, so talk to me with that.
Okay, so uh do you wanna just go through this uh this object code summary? It's it's the one that goes uh landscape. And it has the yellow on the top and it's in your front um front left-hand pocket. It looks like this.
Do you guys need, for those of us who are hybrid, do you want Ken to throw that up on the screen?
There are some people who are on there. I see Kathy Chase and a few others that might not have this information yet, so.
I I do.
Been trying to put this up so people can see it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that I can still see.
I do have it up there. Uh, there it goes.
And there it is.
Why don't you do that, Clint?
And this is dated, what, the twentieth?
This is dated the twentieth.
And that's good, because I have one that's dated the nineteenth, so obviously.
So this is our object code summary. The the way this works is um going from um from left to right. Uh, the first column of of numbers is our, well, actually ended up last year FY twenty-two actual. Uh, the next col- uh column over that's uh slightly shaded is last year's budget. Column next to that is uh what we anticipate this year to actually end up at, a little bit different, but in many cases still the same. The uh, the fourth column over, it's uh, it's the FY twenty-four, it's highlighted in yellow. This is what we're proposing. This is the one that that totals the um, the total amount eighty-three million oh ninety-eight two hundred. And then the increase uh or decrease, uh decrease being in brackets. This is the difference to the FY twenty-three budget, so it's the difference to the shaded column. And the percentage is just a calculation of that increase or decrease versus last year's uh budget, the shaded column. Uh, so um, we'll start with the salaries um. And we start with administrators. Uh, we have the district administrators in there that is at a two percent. Uh, we put in a two percent increase. Um, there's actually, um, there's one administrator that is on uh the contract, so it's kind of skewing a little bit. Uh, because the uh, the principals, assistant principals had a two point two five percent increase in their contract. Um, that's uh line forty-nine and fifty. We have on line fifty-one as well, that was part of the same contractual increase. There may be some movement in and out of different people. Uh, uh, causing some different percentages, uh but overall, it was a two point two five percent increase. Uh, the athletic director was also on the same contract, uh and that's uh the salary per that contract.
And that had to do with the amount of days needed.
We added to this.
That were added.
That might be important to put somewhere.
He has additional days.
Is that part of that was contractual, that is that we added days to that?
Because that's one that would jump out at people.
Jump out at me.
Would you anticipate a similar increase on athletic director next year, another seven percent? This is now, this will.
Yeah, that he needed, right.
Uh, line fifty-four, this is classroom teachers, so this this is our biggest line uh on the whole um whole budget. Um, it it's showing a one point nine percent increase, but it it includes the um almost three percent um. Step and uh. General wage increase, two point nine percent um of uh a million. Well, that actually, that's shared amongst the all the teachers, athletic teachers, the media specialists and the guidance counselors. Uh, but we were able to replace some positions at lower rates. Uh, we do have um. So uh the retirements baked in here.
Would that also have to do with the four FTEs that we did reduce last?
No, because that that would have been.
That would have actualized last year.
Yeah, it it would be reflected in the FY twenty-three budget, so it's uh, but it's it's, it's the um, it's. It's the retirements and the replacement at lower rates. Uh, and uh, there's a slight reduction uh in FTEs that that's that's driving that uh, those numbers there. Um, then we have uh summer school, uh which we didn't have, um, summer school teachers in the prior year. Uh, those were. That was paid by our best, or this is summer school at the high school.
And then I think we probably supported it additionally in last year's budget.
Yeah, last year's budget, we had twenty thousand, which is extra special ed um, uh summer school. Um, uh, so this year, we're we're layering in on top of that, the high school um, summer school that that we uh that we run. Adult ed uh.
Before, before you move on from there, Kim, I had my hand raised.
I'm so sorry, I can't see it. Thank you for calling attention.
On line fifty-eight, summer school teachers. Could you please put the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one? When before you started using the funds from Esser? Um, you know, because it looks as if, oh, well, we didn't have, we paid zero, but that really wasn't the case. So what was it? The year before, when we were not taking it out of the funding?
So in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we we were taking it out of uh, out of our best, or we.
When was the last year you didn't?
Probably twenty nineteen.
Nineteen twenty.
Yeah. Because even in twenty twenty, we all went out, remember? And I think we were probably doing it mostly virtually. At that time.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it'd be nice to show that, cause it it actually looks like, you know, oh, zero, we really, but that's not really true. I mean, we we did pay always for summer schools.
Right, right. We have to notate that somehow, you're right.
Yeah, because when you look at two hundred and fourteen percent increase, it's really not the case.
Right, exactly. Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
Matthew.
Uh, I'm gonna piggyback on what Rita said. I I was kind of interested, how many? If you don't have the numbers, just to ballpark, how many youngsters benefited from the summer school? Uh, I think it would be very nice color to give that that forty-two, that additional forty-two thousand represents a hundred and sixteen students who passed. Two hundred and fourteen courses or whatever the truth happens.
That's really pretty close. That was a good estimate. Really, so, yeah, we should do that.
Okay.
And then the middle school, we have um. Charged with um some of the grants that they've received and also our best sir.
Right.
So um, I think we still have those our besters for the STEM camp at the middle school. And also for the STEM camp at the elementary schools, but that will go away too, and we're gonna have to figure out what to do after that.
That's right.
I just think it'd be very helpful for town council and our team.
Oh, I agree.
To know the impact of what this this big number represents.
Let's see, I think we're on line sixty-one, stipends, uh coaching stipends, these are sports uh uh coach. Stipends, actually, it shows a reduction. Um, those didn't get um negotiated until this year. Uh, last year for the budget, we put in a two percent increase. Uh, we actually, those came in closer to one percent. And so that that's why it's showing a little bit of a decrease. Uh, but then you'll notice the next uh line down. Um, other student activities uh is up twenty thousand or twenty-five percent, and that that's. Uh, two things, uh, we added some additional um student activities to the to the list. And uh, the band director stipend, which was previously um under uh classroom teachers. Uh, is now being um reflected under other student activity stipends.
Which we think it should be.
Yeah.
You know.
Could you tell us why?
I think it had always been there, and so a lot of Ken's work has been to get things in the right buckets. As we've kind of worked on this together with Lori, so that we're calling it kind of more of what it is.
Can I add something to that? Historically, it's always been added to the salary. I don't know the reason historically why that was done for years. But one of the requests during the setting of the stipends was to actually move that out of salary and put it into the stipend account. How it be reflect where it belongs, like I said, yeah. Does that answer your question, Rita?
No, because to me, she's still a teacher. And then whatever additional stipend is needed should be on, should be there. Right? I mean, her whole salary is reflected in this? That's what it sounded like to me from here.
Just the, just the after-school band.
Okay.
During the school day, we've got her in a salary for that. This is the additional stipend.
Okay.
The after-school activity.
All the activities, not just band.
Right, yes.
Yep.
You're right.
Okay.
Ken, I'm going to display my ignorance. Just be gentle with me. Uh, under number, this, I say sixty-two. It shows FY twenty-three estimated and FY twenty-four budget. It looks to me like it's a decrease of around sixteen thousand. And shows an increase of twenty thousand. What am I misunderstanding?
Um, so it's uh FY twenty-three is an estimate. Um, uh. I think that's something I'd have to take back and 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 decipher. Uh, I can't answer right. Uh, so the next um, next section down is the um, so that 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 results in a two point one percent increase for teachers, which. Um, given a two point nine percent contractual increase, um, it it feels like uh, we're kind of on the right, right track with that. Down to the non-certified aides, uh, so we've got the regular teacher aides, uh, which are, or I should say, general education aides. Uh, kindergarten aides. Um, we we put in a four percent increase based upon uh some competitive wage data that we're looking at. Um, and the same with the the Paris tutors and the school bus aides. Uh, in that there there is no contract next year, uh currently, I was, that that has yet to be um. Negotiated, and so we're putting in something to uh reflect uh what we think might, might be.
So that could be up or down, depending on what the contract.
Exactly.
Okay.
And the athletic trainer is another instance of trying to get it in the right bucket, so it was somewhere else and now it's here. And the BCBA, we had to figure out where to put the BCB Ed, so they're not certified staff. In the sense like a teacher would be certified, but they are, they have their certifications and other things.
Right, right, right.
More health-related, actually, yeah.
That's right. So is there a way that we can? That's right. So is there a way that we can, um, sorry, I'm sorry, Beth. Um, is there a way that we can um denote that, that that? That a hundred and sixty nine point six percent increase is not. Is more just putting them in the right. Line.
We do have the added one point O FTE for BCB A, but we could also call out that the athletic director has been moved here as well.
Yeah.
And not athletic director.
I I was wondering, has somebody else had a?
No, yeah.
I was wondering, uh, where we say based on competitive wages, could it be useful to say? Sixteen personnel average equals whatever the wage was. Again, the the more. These numbers become concrete communication.
I, we haven't negotiated the contract yet, so I think it's a little difficult to specify an individual amount. Absolutely.
Next year.
Next year.
But we do have some data we're gonna take a look at from that learn survey to show us where other districts are. And where how we compare to them.
That we can share, yeah, absolutely.
Hey, Ken, there's not a better place to put that BCB A person. Um, I don't consider that person an aide.
No.
Terminology.
But they're considered non-certified. Um, I do see the word aides, but even a tutor.
Right.
You know. Yeah, I would say that. You're right, Beverly, that they're not all aides. Even a tutor is usually us our certified teachers. Um, who have either retired and come back or they're young teachers that have, you know, who were. Doing tutoring work.
So maybe like I heard somebody say put non-certified staff.
Yeah, that was a good, good find, Beverly.
Uh, so the next section down is our substitutes. Um, we are working on the on the rates for uh substitutes. Um, and so we put in uh a five percent.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and then next is the uh is our clerical um support of the. Secretaries at the school, school secretaries are are contractual increase. Um, actually, this one doesn't break down why. Um, and then if we flip to the next page supplemental dash two. We have custodial maintenance and tech. Uh, those are all contractual uh increases. Um, and the. Line seventy eight is security uh supervision, which basically the security guards. Um, and this this reflects uh an additional one point O FTE. Uh, security guard, which is driving that twenty four and a half, uh twenty four point seven percent increase.
Or thirty seven thousand dollars.
Thirty seven thousand, yeah.
They weren't half day, half day, and they kind of overlap at lunch a little bit.
So overall for for salaries and wages, two point seven percent increase, one, one million, three seventy five uh is the increase. And and so that 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 um. Kind of corresponds to the other uh reconciliation we were looking at that showed the contractual increases and the additions and the reductions. So it should, it should all work out.
Hey, Ken, did you say um the security that on line seventy eight? And that thirty seven thousand dollars is due to the hiring of a new security guard?
Yeah, the 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 increase uh due to this uh addition of of the security, one point O security guards is thirty four thousand. Um, five seventy seven of the of the thirty seven, six twenty seven. The remainder would be an increase to the to the rate currently paid to the existing security.
Okay, thank you.
Adrian. I wonder if I could, we could go back, Ken, to or to one sixty seven. The BCB A, that's the individual that.
Uh, ABA programs, any of the specialized programs that would require someone with that level of certification.
Well, that's what my question was. Because we, I I've heard you say he was cert, he was cert, certified. So why is he under not certified?
It's a, I'll try to, I'll try to answer. It it's a different type of certification. It's kind of a health licensure. Versus the state certified teacher. So that's why they're categorized differently in the budget. But it's historically jumping in. Historically, teachers are are identified separately. A BCB A certification. Board certified behavioral analyst licensure with the state of Connecticut.
Something anybody who's got that kind of a certification belongs under a non-certified certification.
We could change uh that so it doesn't say that.
So it's just um. We tend to just simply say certified or our teachers, non-certified are others.
So if you hired me. Because I'm a licensed, but I'm a licensed, but if you hired me to do some consulting work on that, but I wasn't tied into school social work.
Right.
And you you needed to put me, I would be in this not certified, even though I hold licensure and certification.
Yeah, depending on what your description was, right?
Right.
If I could ask one more, I thought you said that he did have teaching certification.
No.
I still don't think, so anyway.
I know, there's a little bit of a.
Yeah.
Twix in there.
So maybe you can say non-teacher certified staff.
In a different category.
No.
Non-teacher.
Not, so here's that that heading, do non-teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Ken, can you change your screen? The people, we online, we see the previous screen. We don't see the screen that you're on now. Thank you.
Oh, did it work?
Yes, well, John, no, I believe.
How come it's kind of cut off?
Yeah, it is.
Is it's too big?
We go back. To line sixty nine and seventy, when it says based on competitive wage data, have we had to raise that?
We have to go through negotiations, but we have a couple sheets we're gonna share with you.
Yeah, we have a, we have some competitive data to share and also talk about what we have projected and have the board weigh in. On if they're comfortable with that number, they feel like we've done enough. It's gonna be questionable. Have we done enough?
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you mean done enough?
Um, to be competitive.
Okay, so we may not be competitive enough yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Still up for conversation.
Okay, yes. And when will we have that discussion? Yeah, we have it listed.
Do we want to, I mean, we 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 got through this first section. Do we want to take that time now and talk about that?
I think that makes sense.
Yes, since we're talking about salaries that.
Do people on the um. On on the screen, do you understand we're gonna be talking about information that Lori is gonna be presenting to us um about substitute teaching?
And para.
Would rather stick to the agenda, but that's okay.
But that is part of the agenda in terms of looking at salaries.
Yes, but it's separate. Anything is fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Can you mind putting up the schedules?
I'm gonna put up the um substitute one. It goes up there. Give us a good thing you're here.
I'm glad you're here.
Job security. No, no, this was just um finalized today. Start talking, we'll get it.
Let me just pull it up on my screen so I can see it while talking. Um, so what we have done is we worked with law learned. They uh, they performed two salary surveys in our local uh region. And one of them was for substitute teachers, which they had completed the survey in December. And then we'll also share the para schedule a little bit later, but um we will get you hard copies of these schedules. Uh, so they have put the survey out right before the holiday break, so we're waiting until we could get every possible number we could before tonight's meeting. Uh, but as you can see, if you look at the uh the rates, um, we're currently, now, these are current rates. These don't project an increase. For next year. Um, we're at one oh seven fifty, and you can see as you go down the list, there's a lot of. Uh, local districts in the one ten, one twenty.
Up to one twenty.
Five. Um, yeah, one fifty certainly an outlier, um, but you got Preston and Stonington that are going as high as a hundred and fifty dollars per day. Um, so if, can you scroll down a little bit, Ken? Yeah, so the average of all these is a hundred and fifteen. We're at a hundred and seven, and I would just specify that's an average of them all, including the hundred and fifty. So keep in mind, one fifteen may or may not be enough to be competitive. You've got a number.
Sometimes averages aren't the best way to look at things. Sometimes it's. Um, mode.
Right.
Like what is mostly happening.
Correct, exactly.
Throw off the outliers, yeah.
But for purposes of tonight, um, there's quite a bit of of area district in Waterford, one ten, London, one ten. Um, Montville's a bit of an outlier at ninety five on the low end. Um, I don't know how they're getting some.
Unless they're not calling the building sub, like our building subs are one twenty seven fifty.
Right.
So I don't know if that one fifty is something that's more like a building sub. That's something we could ask more questions about.
So, and then we have a, you know, old paper one twenty five, lime, old line one hundred and twenty. So you can see in the local area, it looks like we're in the one ten to one twenty range. Do we know what Norwich offers? Norwich did not. But we can follow up on that. Norwich, but we do have Norwich in the para survey, so that was unusual. So we'll show you that.
Do you have any sense for what, now, this is the current rate schedule?
Current schedule.
Do you have any sense for what the average increase is gonna be elsewhere?
No, we don't, because everybody's in the same budget process we are, so. Um, I don't think we'll know that until the budget gets set, so. That's why I'm saying we probably want to be mindful of where we want to be from the competitive scene. Knowing that these will likely increase in these districts.
Adrian.
I don't know, did it tell me what RS, I have two of these, RSD thirteen is, and why is, why would Portland be in here? Portland is like near the middle town.
Yeah, I, they likely responded um to the survey, because if you go down a little bit further. Easton also responded to the survey, um, and they're listed below for our information. I left them in the schedule. Just so that we would have them for comparison points.
What is RS the?
Regional School District seventeen.
Uh, that will then, what you said answers my question.
Yeah, some of them go by their numeric designation versus their town.
Look at even killing me is one fifty and then. Um, one seventy five for certified staff.
Yeah.
What's Wyndham?
Wyndham is uh.
What is one oh seven and one?
It means they they are working within a range. So when they're hiring, they're hiring in that range between one oh seven and one twenty one.
Do you think the one twenty one is more of the building types up?
No, because probably the certified, they they list. Um, one fifty and one ninety over to the other. So I think this is just good data, so we understand where we are.
And it does prompt a lot more conversation and discussion and questions.
It does, right.
Ask colleagues, and I might just put this on our superintendent's monthly update that learned to discuss for next year. So.
Idea of percentage increase of what superintendents are thinking. So, Ken, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, because you might answer.
Oh, um, so within the budget, Ken, with this um increase that we have in here at five percent.
Yep.
Is that based on the original projected schedule we started with, which was one hundred and twelve? Per day.
Yeah, one twelve seventy fifty.
One twelve. And.
The projected.
And then the building sub projection was one thirty five. So that was our original thought until we saw all of this data, so that's what's in the budget currently.
If if I'm to read the, between those lines, Lori, what I'm hearing you saying is that five percent. Increase is probably not enough to meet the need um for our. Our our competitors, sorry, don't mean to call this school the search um competitors, but. Um, in the sense they are when it comes to substitutes.
Okay.
It seems that you've done a lot better than than getting substitutes than we did, you know, four, five months ago.
We are doing a lot of.
We're doing a lot of recruiting.
Yeah, and we're getting some.
Yeah.
We're certainly still not at full capacity, and what we're hearing is they are going to the other districts in the local area or paying for. Um, when you have Stonington and North Stonington right next door paying more, they choose to work there. So.
And the building subs, because we no longer have interns from the university, they're just not doing that as often. We do have it though through the um diversity grant. The interns. But.
The teacher in residence.
Teacher in residence, but. I would say that they really have an allegiance to the school, they become part of the school community, they're getting a little more money, so to make that. Something then, and they're there every day. Like tutors are, so they're very reliable as well.
So we will get these hard, these schedules around to everyone, but we thought it'd be good to at least have an initial conversation this evening about what this data was looking like. And where the current, the budget is currently sitting, and then obviously take input on where we want to go with those rates. Um, does it? Is it helpful for us to know? Is it helpful for us to know what we're looking at in terms of how many bodies? We need. I mean, what? I don't know if my question makes sense, but if we need thirty five substitutes. Teacher or substitute, both certified and especially certified. And we can only find. Or we only get fifteen, is that useful information for us to have? It could be. Uh, I'm just thinking, Ken, I'm thinking out loud, I think. What the question may be is, we're budgeting for a certain amount of activity. And if that activity doesn't happen because we can't find people, do we need to increase this line item or not? Because we're not staffing at a hundred percent.
And I would say that.
I, I, I'm not quite sure what the question is. I just like, I I'm seeing a five percent, I see, I I I see what the picture you're painting. Which is, we are not competitive um with some of our neighboring districts. Um, but what does that really mean? How many are we, how many substitute teachers are we? Always behind in?
So there are the building subs that we haven't hired at a hundred percent. There's still a great amount of illness. There's COVID, there's flu, there's RSV. And the past several weeks between the holidays, we had principals teaching in classrooms. They were doing everything they could. It was like the little kid in the dam plugging the holes, you know, because we didn't have enough bodies. Because adults were sick.
Okay, but that, that's same but different than the question that I have, which is. What do we, is one of the reasons, I I hear the outliers is that we've got all these illnesses going on. It's not an outlier, um, it's reality, um, but. I don't. Please, Matthew, because I'm struggling right now.
I think when we talk about being competitive, that's a pretty intellectual concept. If we say that we we budget or we need X number of building subs and Y number of regular subs to meet the needs of our kids. And we're typically ten to twenty percent below, or whatever the truth happens to be, and put numbers to that. Then when we go to the town council and RTM, we're giving them something they can really taste and feel as opposed to. Being competitive.
And how hard would it to be get that, to get that data? And thank you very much for.
Well, we have that.
Well, we don't budget by individual positions in that line, so. Well, we don't budget by individual positions in that line, so, but I think what we could do and jump in, Ken, and you have a suggestion. But we probably could look at that account and see what we're running, and we can probably say, we're staffing at a certain percentage point, we could probably get there.
Right, but we are not fully staffed.
That's what I mean, we'll, we'll indicate where we're staffing at percentage wise. Um, we can probably get that from the absence data, which will then give us a sense, we're spending X amount of dollars in this account, we're staffing at. Whatever it is, seventy percent, not a hundred, and then see what that yields us.
I mean, there's an opportunity cost here, if the principals are in classrooms teaching, they're not doing the things that you would hope them to do as principals. And there's an opportunity cost to that, which we may not be able to deliver information in dollar numbers. But we can certainly communicate the reality of what we're saying.
And the same thing when a tutor or an interventionist has to go and cover a classroom.
Yep.
Because you're shorthanded, they aren't seeing the children they need to see.
We're seeing that with tutors and interventionists more regularly than, yes.
So, so there would be implications for IEPs then?
Um, I'm not saying the resource specialized teachers, these would be really for people who are giving that SRBI kind of support. The kids who um, do need the extra help, but it might not be for an IEP.
But, well. If, if it says in the IEP that the, the child needs a, a tutor or a parent. And the two, and they're on there.
Well, that's a different story, yeah. But they usually have a resource teacher that they're working with, a specialized teacher.
But I think, Adrian, to your point, there is. Opportunity costs, um, if we're not having. Cost to the kid.
Right, right, which is most important.
We can't, I, I know, it's, you know, Lori, I asked this question of. Do we have a, a, a number, say, we know we need, on average, we need thirty-five substitutes a day?
Yes, we do know what that number is.
And then do we know, on average, how many we actually?
Yes, we do, that's important.
That's what we really need to know.
But this might go back to even Rita's point. Back to normal, back to before COVID and all this illness, and what did that look like typically compared to what it's looked like the past? Three, four years, and the hope is that we get through this and not have this need, right? I said that last year though, too. So, um.
But I, I don't think, that's my, my point, my point is that if we know we need, say, say we need twenty instead of the thirty-five that we need. Whatever that, the, whatever we need daily, but we only can get this many daily. Then we need to, that's what, why we need to get being competitive, because that means that the, the teachers are not in the classroom. And I think that the town councils and town people, townspeople will understand the implications for education. Better than talking about the implications for budget. So that's my point.
I think that is the part of the story we need to tell.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Did you want to show the para? Yeah, that would be great.
You could do it, Ken, you could do it, I believe that you can, no, I can do it.
For Brooklyn?
No.
Go on us.
Yeah.
That's not very big. If I make it too big, then you can't really see a lot, but.
We could scroll down.
Yeah, I can scroll.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So this is the competitive rate survey that Learn had done in the region in October. Um, these are the, the paraprofessional rates as they stand today. Uh, for these different regions. Screen, Ken.
I love my lost stuff.
We're, we're fighting, we're fighting each other.
Oh, are we? Okay, I will not touch it anymore.
I'll touch it.
So, um, now, I will say, what's not here is, is some of the competitive data we saw a year prior that Ken and I had. Seeing that there were significant changes in the pay rates from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Um, that we can only surmise that they took quite a bit of our S R money and kind of put it in place towards these positions. So there's been a significant jump in the number of these districts. So I'll just point out some of the more local ones, now Waterford says they're at fifteen seventy-nine. A little on the lower side, but New London eighteen, which we've heard about.
Um, Eastline is twenty-five.
Eastline, Eastline is uh, eighteen to twenty-five. Um, for their Montville, nineteen fifty-six, we've heard about that one. Uh, Norwich nineteen seventy-two, we've heard about that one.
Um, Ledger's right there with us.
Yes, Ledger's with us, um, and they tend to be on the lower side of the pay scale. Um, and then you can see where we are at fifteen to seventeen, so. Um, as Ken had mentioned, we have allocated money in the budget, understanding that we're going to go into negotiations. And we're probably going to need to uh, have a conversation around. Uh, maybe more than what we've talked about in prior contracts, but. Um, we have, obviously, we haven't negotiated the rate, so we don't know where that will be, but we've tried to at least account for, in the budget for a higher than normal. Uh, increase in that line item. Um, there are some averages here, you can take a look, if you average these rates, where, um, it does show some. Um, opportunity for us, uh, from a competitive standpoint.
Again, you can look at the outliers.
Correct.
And you can look at the mode, what's mostly happening, I think, to get more accuracy than just a, a pure average.
Uh, again, so I'm looking at the variance for Groton on the lower range, it's about sixteen percent on the higher range. It's almost twenty-five percent of. That cell, if you want to call it a cell, if that's what we turn out that we feel we need to do, it's really got to be framed in human terms and student impacts. As opposed to being competitive, of course.
Agreed. And, like I said, we haven't negotiated the contracts, but we have been talking about some. Um, concepts that we can talk through in negotiations, but obviously we can't share those today, but we've been giving certainly some thought to the. To what that might look like. Thanks, Ken, for sharing.
Sure.
Thank you for you guys doing this, this work, I had a time to really help us frame for the budget, I appreciate that. Next.
Uh, so the next section on the, on the, on the object code summary, the, the long section. Um, and I can share that again. I'm sorry, Clint. I get my steps in.
We actually practiced this, but we didn't come in this room. We're gonna have to use the computer, but here, we use my computer in my office, it worked just fine.
Go for it.
We're swinging to benefits, that's what you're going in.
I'm swinging to, to benefits. All right, that's this section here. So, uh, the, the first section and, and benefits is our health insurance, um, so that's eighty-eighty-one. Uh, so you see the four point six percent increase, this is the uh, expected claims increase per, per Anthem that they, they provided to us. Um, uh, you know, if, if, um, it's an estimate, uh, it, we're hoping it doesn't go any further than that, but it is an estimate, I just want to make sure. And I'm, I'm gonna, I'll come back to health insurance in a minute, because we do have on the agenda to talk about health insurance reserve and OPEB, uh, which we can do. Um, if we have an appetite for. The workers' comp and town pension, those are numbers that we get uh, from the town. Uh, we did put in an increase just based on um, historical. Uh, but I, we haven't got anything solid on those at this point, uh, those will be coming over the next um, couple of weeks. Uh, social security, Medicare, these, these really just, uh, it's a calculation based upon salaries, and so it's, it increases due to the fact that salaries increase.
Yeah.
So social security uh, uh, is only on the non-teacher, non, um. Just a non-principal, assistant principal group. Uh, and Medicare would be on everybody, that's why that two point seven is, is the same as the increase in total salaries. Uh, and then other, under other employee benefits, uh, there are the retirement, um, severance payments that we talked about. Uh, the seven, seven teacher retirements, um, uh, in here, estimated. Um, and unemployment has come in lower over the past couple of years, so we're, we're, we're putting in a reduction there. But tuition has definitely come in much higher, uh, there's been a lot more, um. Staff taking advantage of tuition, uh, of doing extra classes, so, uh, we're posing an increase there.
Can I add something to that, Ken? It's, um, the tuition is contractually, um, obligated. So while there's more activities than in the past, it is identified as in.
And negotiated with.
Sorry, Ken.
Yeah, no. Um, so overall, for benefits, the four point four percent increase, and it's being driven by the health insurance. Uh, because that, that's the biggest number on, on, in the section.
Now mentor stipend, is that only there, or is that also somewhere else in the budget?
Um, that is the mentor stipend, what exactly?
That is the position, um, that we had the coordinator position, not the director.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
I thought that we had taken some of that though from our title. Two, or maybe that's the, the other community one.
No, I, I think you're right that, uh.
She might have another.
The, the salary is being funded through, through a grant. Well, not salary stipend, I should say, uh, this is, uh, the other piece.
I think we just need to fine tune that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we stay calling it what it is.
Yeah, I think that that would be helpful.
Um, would this be a good time to talk about health insurance, because we are in the health insurance section?
And that is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
So, I have this, uh.
He's got that great picture.
It's kind of goofy, uh, my little picture, but I like it.
We all like it.
Don't call us goofy on the screen.
I'm sorry, I'm doing it to you again, Clint.
No, it's gonna come up any second.
Is it?
Yeah, just wait.
Okay. Even I don't see it, it's like blank. It's like blank here.
Yeah, it's, it's a PDF that you're trying to.
Yeah, it wasn't blank before I started doing it. I'm gonna stop. And, oh gosh, what happened? Hold on, hold on, hold on. This is the one.
That's why I've added your channel several years, several years ago.
There it is.
Okay, so. Health insurance reserve, um, I just wanted to go over the concept of health insurance reserve, so everyone is on the same page. Uh, so, as, as a self-insured, um. Organization, we're self-insured with the, uh, with the town. Uh, meaning, uh, claims are paid by us, we don't, we don't submit them to an insurance company, we pay all the claims. Uh, as a self-insured plan, we have to maintain a reserve to pay for a portion of those claims. So at any time, we have to have a bucket of money in case all those claims came in at once. And so that's, that, I like to think of it as a, as a, as a cylinder or something that, that holds, holds. Uh, uh, it looks like liquid, but it holds, holds funds. Uh, so that's, that's what this, uh, this funny looking, um.
So yellow is.
So.
Yield, careful caution.
Yeah.
Red is hot, don't touch it.
So, so the reserve is made up of two pieces, uh, there, there is the corridor, which is, it's twenty-five percent of annual claims, and this is the number. This is our minimum number, we can't go below twenty-five percent of annual claims at any time. So that, that's our, you're right, so that, that's caution, don't go below this number. Um, the yellow, this, this is what we call the, the reserve that's above corridor, um, and for. Uh, for this year, we're anticipating that's going to land somewhere in the two million mark. Um, and so this, this is, this is the one that we want, that we want to monitor, and, um. It, it's our buffer to, to make sure we don't go dip down into that quarter. Um, and then the other things that happen on this is, is we got a couple of inputs, uh, we got what the board contributes, uh, and that's, that's. Reflected in this number, it's not the only thing in, in the number on the, on the object code summary, but it's, it's, it's what would actually get into the health insurance reserve. And then the employees also submit, also, um, contribute to, to this, to this reserve. Uh, and that's most, mostly contractual through, through the contracts, there's a percentage that they're, uh, that they're to contribute. Uh, and then what comes out of this is, is really two things, the easy one to talk about is claims and the admin cost. So this is what we pay to Anthem to, so that all those claims can get paid, but we're, we're paying for all the claims, and we pay for them to administer this plan. But then we have this new wrinkle this year, it's called lasered stop-loss claims. Yeah, so, let me, I got words here.
You got words?
I have a lot of words, but. So, so as a self-insured plan, we have to have insurance that protects us against catastrophic claims. So if somebody has a million-dollar claim, we want to make sure we're not, we're, we're, we're protected.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's called a stop-loss policy, and so we get that, and we, we actually get it through Anthem right now, right now, although we do shop it out every year. Um, the, the current level for that stop-loss is any, any claim, total claim for a year that exceeds two hundred thousand dollars. Stop-loss would pay it. So two, up to two hundred thousand, we're paying for it. Two hundred five thousand, we pay two hundred, and the insurance company pays five thousand, so, and if it goes up.
If it were a million dollars, we would still pay two hundred.
That's right, exactly, that's right.
Right.
Per individual claim, per year. So every year it resets. Now, starting in FY twenty-three, uh, the insurance company said, okay, you can pay for the premium, you have to pay a premium for this policy. But in addition to that, we're going to identify a claim, and we're gonna make that claim up to five hundred thousand. So it, it works the same way as a two hundred thousand, but now that limit is, is higher. Uh, so that's why.
Responsible, five hundred, not two hundred.
Right, so that's why you see there, uh, laser stop-loss claims.
What about the others?
Stays, if they don't laser it, it stays at.
Yeah, so they only identify for the ten, for the, the board event, one claim, or one, get one claim. So that's the one that we would hope doesn't, doesn't exceed. Uh, that much, that it stays as low as possible, uh, they, they also identified one for the town, so we're not alone, uh, this is happening on both sides.
They identify that based on research and history and.
Yeah, they have all the medical information, so they make a determination based on the medical history, which we're obviously not allowed to see, but that's what they. Realize to make that.
So they could see something, say, in your history, and say they laser you, so any claims that you make. We have to pay for.
On that one claim.
Up, up to that three hundred.
Now, this is a change in the marketplace, and every stop-loss carrier moved to the same model, so it's not something that we are able to change. Or negotiate, um, it was a change in the industry and how they were handling stock loss.
So, so that's, that's the other output here, so it's not just the claims, it's also now this stop-loss claim.
But that is new from years past.
It is.
Anticipate to go forward.
Right.
You'll see laser claims each year.
So I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, actually, I'm probably more than confused. It sounds, first of all, this is reinsurance, and that up until this year. Uh. Any claim over, was it two hundred thousand? The reinsurance covered that, that was the premium we paid for. And now this year, it remains two hundred thousand, except.
With this one.
Except what I'm not clear on is whether they get the highest person, and they say the first, you know.
No, that, they.
They have to identify.
Ahead of time, they choose one, they say, I think this one's gonna be big, so they choose it.
Okay, and it.
It could be wrong.
And they could be wrong.
Could be, that, that's the whole.
Could be just the two hundred thousand. Okay, there's no big deal. But it's only one, it's not like we're taking a whole subset of our population.
How do we budget for that, for that eventual health?
So what we do, Ken, feel free to jump in, I think we had one too many conversations. I jumped in, he was asking how we budget for that, and that's where we would want to maintain the reserve. In a healthy state, that if that should occur, we would go. In a healthy state that if that should occur, we would go to the reserve to fund that claim, not necessarily go back and increase the budget.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's exactly right, yes.
So what I'm hearing from you is in years past, we've been able to buffer some of our losses by using some of the money from the corridor. But we need to be much more careful because of many things, but one of them is this laser. Exactly.
Okay.
And when we do that, when we buffer, we take it from there, we kind of have to pay ourselves back eventually.
Yeah.
And the same is true with this OPEP, which was really a problem years ago. And then we really understood it better. And so. A lot of times you'll hear us say at the end of the year, if there are some funds, we want to be able to pay ourselves back to health insurance and OPEP. Not that we've had a whole lot of extra funds left over, but.
Right, in years prior, OPEP was running at a deficit.
That's correct.
So we, you know, with, uh, working with Ken and we obviously work with the town. We work to get that, um, back in the black, so to speak. You know, they have a projection that we should be at. We're not there, but we're certainly moving in the right direction.
I, I have another little.
Picture.
Picture for OPEP. A little bit different colors. So OPEP, just so everyone understands what OPEP means, this is other post employment benefits. So a, a person retires and they're still able to, it's mostly health benefits and they're still able to, um, get, um, access to health benefits. Uh, we have to, we have to keep a reserve, uh, to cover those. Um, and, and you're right, the, the actuaries calculator reserve, we're not quite there yet, but, uh, we are building slowly. Uh, and then once again, this is a combined, uh, reserve with the town. The town also has their own OPEP and we kind of, we keep them separate, but then we put them together. Uh, and so for, uh, the OPEP, there's, there's three things that, that come into it. There's a contribution that the board makes every year. Um, based upon the actuaries give us the contribution amount. There is an amount that comes in from the teachers retirement board to help fund this. And then the retirees themselves, uh, uh, contribute, uh, into this reserve. That's right.
Do we invest these funds in TBA and treasuries or something so we can generate some revenue?
Yeah, it, the, the town, uh, uh, controls all these reserves on their, on their side. We just, we maintain our peace. But yes, they, they would, they would, they would do all that, yeah.
Now, for all of these things that you're seeing, I'll make sure Joan has the hard copies that can go to you with, with the write up of this. So that if you want to be able to just slide these right here on the left hand side pocket, you'll have the most updated.
That would be really.
And we'll make sure they're dated.
Yes.
For you, so that if they change, which things will change as we go through this process. Maybe not these pictures.
I don't do very good, but.
Can I add something to this? Just, just so that you don't think that, um, we OPEP people are getting away with anything here. I just want you to know that my contribution to a health insurance is over twelve hundred dollars a month. So just so you know that. So the town, so we OPEP people are not. Getting anything or nothing.
No, you're exactly right. And then that's why you see here the retiring contributions. All right, so that's, that's all I got on, uh, health insurance and OPEP. Julie.
Do we have any other, do we have any questions?
Okay, that's enough.
All right, so we'll go back to. The, uh, lengthwise.
Benefits.
Yeah, we, we, we got through benefits. We got through page supplemental two. Now we're onto supplemental three.
Did we, yeah.
And so this is, uh, this is purchase services. Um, so the first section is instructional services, uh, and we have, um. Pretty much, uh, the little decrease under instructional service, but a, but a big increase under instructional improvement services. In the, in the prior years, math and literacy improvement was previously grant funded. Uh, and so we are, we're, we're anticipating paying for that, uh, through this budget. Uh, so that's driving that, that, that large, uh, hundred sixty seven thousand increase. Hundred sixty seven percent increase, hundred two thousand increase.
Can you walk me through that number ninety six? And it's because our grants have.
So the literacy and the math grants have subsided. This is really, um. Bill's area of expertise now that he's kind of taken over that in teaching and learning. So for professional learning, professional development, we still are, um, connected with, um. Some of the math programs, like the new perspectives and the, um. The FASNO, CFLM, and then the CMP three. So these are programs that you still have to get the software for annually to continue. That had been paid for, for five years under the math grant.
So I think what, what. And I think it's appropriate. I think the pushback and, and please folks help me out if I'm misspeaking. Is, is that we were really talking about we could sustain, you know, how do we sustain that?
And so we have no more book purchases. This is just to have the platform. The teachers to utilize. Now, you know, it used to be in the, the good old days, you'd buy a textbook and it would last for. A decade at least, sometimes too long, especially social studies history. Um, but now the way that the framework is, is that we do have the books and we have the workbooks, but. And we have, those are continuing to be used, but there's a platform. So software now. This is the area that Clint and.
Well, there's annual fees.
Annual fees.
You know, so instead of paying these huge lump sums for, for textbooks, uh, every ten years, we're paying a yearly fee for the most updated software. The area that I think you're referring to, Kim, was that we were gonna look at the professional development pieces of all these programs where, uh, they were sort of front loaded. Um, and, um, we're looking to see where we could start to, uh. Build our own.
Train the trainer.
Yeah, yeah, build our own capacity so we don't have to continue to, uh, use that money for professional development moving forward. And we are doing that with all these different programs with the, with the FASNO and, and with, you know. New perspectives in math and the teachers college, that's.
I, I guess. I guess there should be more in, in our summary. I, I'm trying to see where the supplement, um, matches into my budget book. Um, so I guess I could just follow the numbers.
This is like, we're kind of giving you the, the big picture, this view, and then we'll be going through it. Item by item, and you're gonna see that again, and it'll be highlighted.
I, I just, I, I think that that needs to, that the three twenty two and that three twenty four, I think that that needs to have more explore, explore. Exploring.
Color.
It, yeah.
So that's your typical operating. Work of teaching and learning that always occurs. And it occurs for every discipline.
Right.
And so their software costs, there will be continuous professional learning, even though you have a lot of people here who are highly trained. And, you know, and can train others. You, you still need to stay current.
Right.
So things are ever changing, you know?
I, 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 I guess for me, it's just that I understand that because, uh, you know, I get immersed in that every week. Um, but for people who just, I mean, I think that this has been Matthew's point since he's been on the board, is more explanation. You know, in terms of understanding that this is, that this is software, this is, you know, what, what does this have to do? And yes, our grants covered that. And yes, we have a sustained claim of a sustainability.
Right.
Um, thing, but we still have to buy this stuff. Cause I don't want people to say, but you've told us that these grants, we have a sustainable plan. Yes, we do. And this is part of it in that we have to buy the platform pieces. I guess for me, that would be important.
So the entire budget is this year, a hundred and sixty five, three. The reason it looks so low before is that we had those grants taken care of.
But that, but if you had an explanation of that, I think that would be helpful, William.
Yeah, and so it'd be great to know lower risk for increases on other banks. There's so many other grants, right, that are. Soon in the short periods of time, so it'd be great to understand, all right, but we are expecting an increase. In this year. Twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six, unless we do X, Y, and Z, you know, it'd be nice to know what plan is. To, so with this one in particular. You know, go increase one hundred and two thousand, that might have been expected, right? So it'd be great to know that. Well, beforehand, uh, yes, we expect once that grant's over, our expected, you know, amount per year will be.
So the math grant closed in twenty three. That was just the latest closed grant. It was a five year grant. To the tune of one point two five oh million. So we got a lot, big bang for our buck in that. And so when we have the grant, we are averaging, let's say forty to fifty thousand of costs still. But now that the grant is gone, you see that the increase went up a hundred thousand. And it wasn't just for math, it's for math and LA and other things too.
I mean, my, my concern, it's not just that one, it's just that we have others as well. And so over the next five years, we might be adding the same thing, another hundred thousand, another two hundred thousand. For areas where we type grant support that will go away. So it'd be nice to know. And where are the biggest risks for increase in the budget? Based on things that we're using, you know, that we have grasses. We can do that.
And he has it all detailed, like deep fine tuned detail.
I'm sure.
That spells it all out for us.
I think we can understand it because, or we have some sense of understanding of it. But when you talk to a town councilor or an RTM or other people who have no knowledge and they hear, we have a, you know, we, we are gonna sustain this. And this is how we're gonna do it. We have that plan. This.
Right. What decision to be made to get it to this?
Yeah.
And what it could have been. We got it to this and then how it's gonna work out over the next three to five years.
I think they. I think they're, go ahead.
No, I want to hear you.
I think the joke, JQ public's perception, sustainability means we'll be able to continue to do without.
For free.
Taxpayer.
Everything. So it doesn't mean, so it'll always cost us something.
So I do have a question and feel free to laugh at me. I, I can take it. Thank you very much. You're ahead of me. Um, I get all kinds of requests for new software. And when it comes to software that I have for my computer, when it comes to viruses, et cetera, I can buy it every year. But when they want me to upgrade from Windows this to Windows that, I sometimes say there's a cost to doing that in my time and energy. I'll hold off two years to do it. It's like a new, it's like a new edition of a ELA book or a social science book. Do we need every new edition? Could we function? And the answer may well be no. Could we function by skipping a year of the subscription? And doing our teaching based on last year subscriptions per year and say, but we're gonna be up and we're gonna do it the second year is, is there.
Annual cost.
But a lot of the time, it's not just for a new edition. It's to maintain, to, to, yeah, to have access.
Well, I trust you guys, that's all.
Yeah, but I hear, I understand what you're saying, but that's not, most of these costs are based on just access, you know, pure access.
And Clint, you, you also deal with that a lot, like upgrading us and, and when do you upgrade? And, and aligning it to other programs that we have in the district, whether it's the finance programs and. There's a lot to think about with.
As, as you're asking that question, what struck me too very briefly here too, is we have to match hardware affordances with software affordances. So if you're too far, you know, newer hardware, very old software, vice versa, that can cause, um, it issues. So we have to, we don't have to be perfect, but we need to be in the ballpark. Um, and to superintendent's point, yeah, there's, we're, we're, we're constantly trying to find where the biggest bottleneck is. From a data flow perspective, and cause so many of the systems now talk to each other. So if we upgrade some and deprecate or keep others behind, then we have some connected tissue issues. Um, I wish all these things weren't so. It's the reality of the environment and it kind of does.
It's a good business model for them.
Especially when they were hanging out free of charge and then they started charging us.
They didn't go to the subscription model versus box software because they were trying to be generous. They did it because it's a better business model. It's also, they would argue, better service because we always have the most up to date version, but they charge accordingly for that.
I, I wanted to back up with, with what you said, and that was the idea of talking about the repercussions after the grant is over. Cause I hear this all the time, but you know, I would say you've got a grant, so when it runs out, what are you gonna do? And I think. I, I think specific answers, uh, would be very helpful to making that clear to the public.
I, I, I think we were growing each year in terms of our transparency, um, with things. And so I think that, that's just, we add that part to our dialogue is that we get these grants. And yeah, we, we, we absorb a lot of things because we do this, this and this, but there's always, there's always a con.
And we continue to, to, to go after these grants.
Right.
So there's a, for instance, in the last STEM careers grant. We, we added the piece on literacy across the disciplines, reading and writing in every discipline, which I think is pretty darn important. You know, if you're in science class, if you're in social studies class. So that was a continuation of getting more professional learning. Because I often will hear teachers, especially at the secondary level, well, I never. Was a teacher of reading or writing, but everybody needs to be a teacher of reading and writing. And every, you know, it's really important, especially for the formative years. So in hearing those things, we knew to capture that in this particular grant that was, you know, really focused on STEM careers, but literacy. In those STEM, you know, courses. Um, so. So always kind of forward thinking, what's the next thing that we are going to need? You know, and so sometimes you can build in some of that sustainability in the next one.
Right. What's good about all the technologies is that they're all trackable. You know, we're consistently looking at usage, we're consistent, we get the data that's coming from them. We're trying to gauge which are, we're getting the best results for our kids. So that's all that's helping us make decisions. Another thing that we're looking at in terms of professional development. Moving forward is what we're seeing, obviously because of the, the gaps that have been created by COVID. We have sixth grade teachers facing third grade problems, if you understand what I'm saying. Like they're getting. Kids, you know, so they're, they're having to build their skill set because they've never had to teach reading before. Uh, or, you know, or I'm just saying, or it's like some basic skills that they should usually have when they come to the middle school. The kids are no, no, you know, they no longer have. So we're trying to, again, using the, we're trying to use the people we have, like our elementary literacy specialists, not work with our, uh, you know. Middle school and sometimes high school staff, but we are seeing those problems too, that's sort of adding to our, uh, professional development.
Our repertoire.
Yeah.
But I thought we were all supposed to be teachers of reading. We are, and that's why I thought it was really, I thought it was really necessary that, that we, we build confidence. Um, and, you know, and we have some, some really good experts who are gonna be working on that. You know, in the next month.
Yeah, I'm saying like our seventh grade teachers aren't used to teaching phonemes and those type, you mean, you know.
Yes.
Ready, oh.
Any, no, no question.
Um, next section under purchase services, professional services, uh, line, uh, ninety eight, which is professional services. Uh, this is being driven mostly by, um, we need to have these new preventative maintenance agreements, uh, for some of the, uh, equipment at the new buildings. Uh, so that's driving a, an increase, uh, in, in this line.
Do you have a, for instance, what that might be thing, like is there a particular concrete?
These are new type healing systems.
And is it something that our staff can do, but we can have to train them?
They'll be learning along with.
Okay, all right, good.
Uh, lines ninety nine and a hundred, these are, uh, services that we receive, um, other professional services. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, uh, medical or, uh, evaluations. Uh, we're anticipating some increased rates there as well as for the OTPT services that, uh, that students receive. Uh, there is a, we're anticipating an increased rate. Uh, there is a, we're anticipating an increased rate in that area as well.
Can I just ask, other professional services, um, and, and OTPT, those usually come from LEARN, right? They're a service that we contract down.
We contract services.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not exclusively LEARN, but, uh, they're the biggest piece.
Yeah.
How often do we look at other organizations to provide ourselves?
Um, yeah, every, uh, every, uh, three years, we, uh, we go out and we look at, uh, the, the different providers and.
I would say, though, the rest are, um, regional education centers. So LEARN happens to be ours in southeastern Connecticut. Cric is the capital, you know, Hartford, so they each, they're pretty in sync with one another with costs and that kind of thing. So, and that's usually who the districts utilize rather than a company. So they'll use their regional service provider. But.
Yeah.
We can see that.
Well, but for instance, uh, for the OTPT, OT is, is, um, is provided by LEARN, whereas the PT do go to an outside service, and so that's what we're looking at every three-year basis to determine if we're getting the best rate.
And we used to do the BCBA that you heard me talk about. We've had BCBAs with the autism program for, you know, forever probably. And they were, you know, they were contracted through LEARN, and we really felt that we needed to have one on staff ourselves, you know, so that's why we invested in this. Otherwise, you would have seen that kind of cost in a, in another place in this budget. So.
Um, under athletic, uh, officials and services, uh, we are anticipating more home games next year, that's driving that athletic officials, other athletic services is like reconditioning of, of equipment, uh, and we do anticipate that we're going to, uh, instead of buying new, uh, recondition some of the, some of the existing equipment, so that's why you see an increase in those lines.
Can you help me for just a second? I don't. Are we not going over to the elementary? You seem, you seem to be walking through this.
Yeah, um.
Cause I'm just, I'm looking at our time, it's eight o'clock, and we didn't even touch the elementary, which was part of our agenda.
Yep.
There's two or three pages of it.
Um, yeah, there's, there's quite a bit, uh, to go, um. I guess my recommendation would to, to finish off with the purchase services and then maybe go over to elementary.
Would we say what?
Table what?
Elementary.
Well, we have to be careful about tabling on the first night because we have a, we have a, we have a lot to go over, and remember, we're having some added information kind of being helping us to understand the budget, so.
So, uh, not that I want to do this, but I, but there is an extra day built into the schedule, so I don't say I want to push things at all, but the, don't, don't be concerned that we won't get to it all, but that means we have to spend more time together. Um, and, uh, it, it, our, our, uh, agenda, I think, was kind of aggressive, so.
Okay. Um, I don't know where people are, um, but I, I'm okay with us kind of finishing finding a comfortable spot to stop here and then maybe call it a night. This is our first. I mean, it's eight o'clock, this is our first budget session. And maybe we can take a better look at adding. After a while, we use. Like, after a while, it's kind of hard to kind of be thinking through things. Is that, how do, um, people feel, um, who are, uh, uh, with us through Zoom? Does that make sense?
Let me take it down so you can see.
Yeah, did we get through that? Computer network was the.
What was your suggestion?
One line.
What was your suggestion?
It's just kind of, kind of, kind of finishing up on this professional service and then calling it a night. Where are you guys on that?
That sounds great.
Okay, it, it, really, you know what I love about that, about your voice, is that you're not on our screen at all, but yet you come through, and it's kind of.
Oh, great, that's amazing, yeah. Calm way of saying it, I just kind of had that, oh.
Thank you. All right, so let's just finish what we've been doing, which I guess is one more line, and then we'll call it a night. You has a question on that.
So I know we put in for some, um, work for CIP on, uh, athletic bleachers. That may happen, that may not happen. In the event that it doesn't happen, we still have some exposure for safety issues. And I'm wondering, uh, this may be the wrong place to do it in the budget, but, uh, I'm just, the places people possibly falling down, which in the reaches, whether we can, if we don't get some funding, if we should be buying some two by, or one by sixes or one by eights and just go and tack it up so people won't fall through. Is there any place that this could be discussed, if this is not the moment, the most timely that?
That, this is not the moment to talk about that, because it's not in, that's not covered in the, the.
Fine, all right.
My apologies.
That, that would be more on, yeah, that'd be more on Sam's.
We'll, we'll have a section where we, or Sam gets the, the whole.
Great, thank you.
Let's get more chairs.
So the, the last, the last line is, uh, computer network services, uh, these are the, uh, services we need to, to maintain and, and deliver international, uh, other computer services. Uh, there, we are experiencing an inflationary increase in this area, and so we're anticipating that, uh, to go up by eight point one percent.
Which is thirteen thousand dollars.
Thirteen thousand.
Yeah, sometimes you have to be careful about looking at the eight point one and see what that really is, so.
It's overall for purchase services, it's a thirteen point seven percent increase, so it's a.
But I think that the driver of inflation is partly responsible for that.
Yes.
In everything we've just talked about.
Okay, so before you do your motion for adjournments, um, just, um, so the next time that we are gonna be hanging out together would be next Monday, where we're gonna continue on with our march through the budget. Uh, but I just also just want to make sure that people, um, are aware that the following Tuesday, because Martin Luther King is on the Monday, the following Tuesday is our public hearing and a works, a work session afterwards. And I, um, also suggested that we actually had a February, um, third meeting um, in my email, but it's actually February first, um, where we're gonna be meeting with the Board of Ed and the RTM um, Town Council to kind of, um, as, uh, uh, to really kind of begin to educate them, find out what they're, what they're feeling in terms of financial stuff for the town, but also it's a good time for us to educate.
Sit together.
Right, and that's might be a really good time for us to do the education of some of the stuff that we were talking about tonight, to really kind of pay.
The terms and grass, like I think about that first section, is it's a yellow section?
Yeah, no, you're right. So, um, I, I just wanted to say thank you very much, um, folks, and, um, it'll be nice to be spending this intensive month and a half with each other. Have a second? All those, uh, any discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Co, same, motion is carried. Bye, guys.
Bye.